Before we commence this meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which hopefully are on the screen behind me. They are. Also, can you please ensure your mobile phones are switched to silent? Councillors, can I remind you to speak directly into the microphone? Make sure your cards are pushed firmly into the console as we are being webcast. Members of the public, I'd like to say that this, as a committee, we understand the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. This is a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting. Therefore, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and in the committee, and refrain from any booing or cheering or any other form of disturbance. Thank you. Let's move on to the main business. Item number one, minutes of the meeting which took place on the 3rd of June have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. I am content that I assign these as the correct record of that meeting. Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
Apologies from Councillor David Round.
Thank you very much. Declaration of interests. Emma, any members declared?
Number four, the meeting chairman.
Do you have any non pecuniary or disposable pecuniary interests? councillor Edwards.
I'm a member of the Higginham Town Council Planning Committee.
Thank you, councillor Parker as well.
Likewise.
Thank you very much. Question from members of the public. Has there been any questions, Emma?
Number six, chairman.
Thank you very much. And item number five, any relevant updates, government guidance or legislation? I'd ask councillor Matthew Evans, are there any updates at this time? Or, sorry, Paul, are you taking?
Chairman, I can confirm there are no updates since the last meeting.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask that the ambit of this very useful item is included, is extended, to include any relevant cases in the High Court or Court of Appeal?
Noted, thank you very much. Very good idea. Applications for planning permission. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday, the 4th of August, at a time to be agreed. Let's move on to the planning applications. First planning application is item A1, WA 2015-0215. The outline application for the erection of a dwelling with access, layout and scale to be approved at land adjacent to Highfield, Scotland Lane, Hazemere, GW273A. Louise, we'd like to introduce the application, please.
Thank you, Chair. The site is located on the southern side of Scotland Lane, close to the junction of Haste Hill. Detached residential properties are located to the north and west of the site, and a three to four storey block of flats is located to the south of the site, with single storey garages close to the southern boundary of the site. Woodland is located to the north-east of the site. There is a sweet chestnut tree, which is subject to a tree protection order in the north-eastern corner of the site. The site was previously occupied by two bungalows, which were removed in order to gain consent for the erection of the host property, which is located to the south-west of the site twenty-five years ago. Since then, it has formed a garden area for Highfield, the host property. There is an existing shed on the site, and as you can see from the plan, this is the outline of where the original bungalows stood. These photos are all taken from within the site, the first looking towards the eastern boundary of the site, also showing the northern boundary with Scotland Lane. The second photo is looking west, towards the existing access, and the third is taken looking south, looking towards the flats at Whitwell Hatch in the distance, and this building in foreground is the garages adjacent to the site which serve Whitwell Hatch. These photos show the northern boundary of the site with Scotland Lane, and the existing entrance to the site which serves Highfield, the host property. This photo is taken from within Whitwell Hatch, showing the garages which are adjacent to the site. These photos are taken from Scotland Lane, and just by the entrance to the site, and show the property Bracken Hills, and the associated garage with this property, which is just opposite the site. This photo is taken from the street scene on Scotland Lane, further to the west of the site, where properties are located in closer proximity to the street frontage. And this plan shows the proposed layout. The property would be accessed by the existing access which serves Highfield. There will be a two-storey property positioned here, with a garage located to the side of the site. Hard standing for car parking would be located to the front, and an area of amenity would be located to the rear. The trees to the rear of the site, which are subject to tree protection orders, are proposed to be retained, but full details of the landscaping would be dealt with at reserve matters stage. This slide shows the relationship between the property and Scotland Lane, which is at a lower land level to the site. Again, Whitwell Hatch is at a higher land level to the site. Full details of the appearance of the dwelling and the garage would again be dealt with at reserve matters stage. The matters of principle or technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, highways, including impact on traffic and parking, and the effect on the SPAs. The matters of judgment are the impact on the character of the countryside, the sustainability of the location, the impact on the AGLV, the impact on residential amenity, and the standards of accommodation and provision of amenity space. Can I also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which has an amendment to the paragraph on housing supply on page seventeen of the agenda? The officer recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that councillors have.
This item is subject to public speaking. I understand the procedure has been explained, but I believe Mr Peter Bridge is not present. Still not present. Okay, in that case, can I move on to Sarah Featherston, who is a supporter of the scheme?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak briefly tonight in support of our application. I'm the agent, the architect. First, I'd like to touch on why our clients want to build this house, and then, secondly, respond to the town council and neighbours' concerns. Paul and Lorna are living in Highfield House with their two young children, and the idea to build on the adjacent plot was initially born out of a need to have a home for Lorna's ageing parents, so they can be close by to the family. However, what is interesting about this proposal is that it resolves both small and large scale issues, because in a small way, it also helps the larger housing crisis by turning an underused, awkward plot into a sustainable development, which is supported by the national planning policies that seek more sites for housing. The plot previously had two bungalows on it, and since their demolition has become an unsightly piece of land, dislocated and remote from the adjacent house. Whilst there was previous planning approval to build Highfield House with a condition to demolish the two bungalows, this was over twenty years ago, and current planning policy has been updated to meet changing demands and new housing targets, which, as you know, the council need to meet. This site is perfect for Lorna's parents, not only because they can be close to their daughter, but also because of the site's proximity to town centre and local services, in fact making it an ideal quiet location and a suitable house for any one of our growing population of over sixties. And in that respect, despite being in designated C2 countryside, it is not located remotely in countryside, and is in fact very much part of a residential street with houses all around it, something that policy C2 says should be considered as an exception to the policy if the area is built up and close to settlement boundary, which it is. We hear and understand the town council and neighbours' concerns about visual impact and privacy, and want to reassure them that these are issues that our client also shares. Following your site visit, which I hope you found useful, you will note that the new house will not be visible from the street due to the high bank and existing mature hedge trees and dense vegetation, which Paul and Lorna would like to retain as good natural screening. We've located the house so there is minimum disruption or removal of any trees, and have orientated the house so that it's only at smaller width, the gable end faces the street, and the house windows benefit from a west-east aspect away from adjoining properties. The closest two properties, Whitwell Hatch and Hazelwood, have their buildings over forty metres away from the house, and within that distance there are a number of mature trees between fifteen to twenty metres high, which will provide further screening and are considerably higher than the eight point one metre high ridge of the new house. So, in terms of neighbours' concerns, we're happy to accept a condition to retain screening, and will address both this and the material treatment of the house when we submit a reserved matters application for landscape and appearance. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, over to you.
Good evening, chairman, welcome back. We've missed you. Can I ask the officers to put up the issues, the slide you put up earlier? That's the one. Right, looking on the left-hand side, matters of principle, the only issue there is principle of development. And as far as I'm concerned, with this development, there are no principles, because the existing house was built on the understanding that this site would become a garden or some such thing. Right, looking at matters of judgment, it is outside the settlement boundary. Now, people will say, oh, it's just across the road. Doesn't make any difference how close it is to the boundary, it's outside the settlement boundary. I know in the officers' report that you're looking on the positive side of things, but it's outside the settlement boundary. Sustainability of location is another issue. Can we put up the location plan, back up on there, please? Right, there, that's fine. Now, it says there that it's easy to get to the bus stop. Can you show me where the bus stop is on that location plan?
Yes, we'll walk down.
How far down?
The bus stop.
Well, I'll just tell you, it's ridiculous, okay? Nobody's going to walk to the bus stop, because it's down a great big long hill, down Haste Hill, and you're not going to go that way. So, to put it in the officers' report is a waste of time. Can we go back to the principles of development, please? Right, back on there, okay. Impact on the AGLV, it will impact on the AGLV, it is development, and no matter what anybody says, you may not see it, but it's still there. With regard to visual amenity, there's no loss of visual amenity at all, because it's well hidden. Impact on residential, nothing there either. Division of amenity space, can we look at the block plan, please? Can we have a condition that when and if this house is built, that the garden space remains as it is? I wouldn't like to see another house go to the left of the current building, or to the, I think it's to the east, isn't it? So, because it's been shoved over to one corner. Other than that, apart from the fact that you've said that Fox Warren enables this property to have less space than any of the other houses around, that's all I can say, really, but I will be considering this very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, chairman. May I add my good wishes to your return after such a good holiday? I know this road and site well, and for me, the only real issue is the impact of the house on the street scene. And I think we have to remember that houses are in place for a very long time, and the concern I have is the height of the building and its proximity to the street, to Scotland Lane. I don't take a great deal of comfort from the hedge, I'm afraid. It's not like a tree which can be put under protection. Hedges, if they grow too high, tend to be cut down, provide more light. And looking at this layout, I feel that the complaints of certain neighbours that this will make a significant difference to the street scene are well founded. So, subject to what I hear from others, my feeling is that the argument that it's one more house is frankly immaterial. The issue is what will, allowing this house to be built mean to the appearance and ambience of Scotland Lane, and my feelings at the moment are those who think it will make an adverse difference are probably correct. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Inchbald.
Thank you, chairman. Taking up councillor Mulliner's point about the hedge, I can see no reason why the residents of this property, if it's approved, should ever want to take the hedge down. It's on the northern side of the site, the southern side is where the sunlight comes from, and the windows will not, they won't have any windows on that end gable anyway. So, apart from a very limited amount of light immediately beside the hedge in the garden, I can't see that there would be a problem. Added to that, the hedge provides a distinct amenity to the property, because Scotland Lane is quite a busy road, and the hedge will provide some dampening of the sound levels. So, I really don't think that there's any good reason, don't think that we should give any weight whatsoever to the argument that the hedge could be removed. My own feeling is that this is a perfectly reasonable application, and I shall be voting with the officers.
Thank you very much, councillor. councillor Edwards, please return.
Thank you for allowing me to come back, chairman. Could we put in a condition there with regard to the amenity space, ensuring that we have the relevant amenity space to the house, because I wouldn't like another building to go on there if possible?
Yeah, we could require a condition requiring the amenity space to remain as specified on the plans.
councillor Mulliner.
To just clarify, I take note of councillor Inchbald's comments, I was not thinking the hedge would actually be removed as such, although no-one can control what future occupiers or owners might choose to do. But I think certainly if it is reduced, it would still have its beneficial effects, but it would also release views of the house from the street, and that was the concern I was expressing.
Fine, thank you very much. The amendment there, we need a secondar. Do we have a secondar for the?
I'll second the condition.
Right.
The condition for the amenity space.
For the amenity space. So, we have a secondar, so can we? Any comments, members? Can I have your show of hands to support that amendment, the condition?
Yeah, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Thank you. Those against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, then, members, let's move to the recommendations. Recommendation is permission be granted, subject to the conditions one to twelve, and the one we have just made on the amenity space, and informatives one to eleven are set out on pages twenty-nine to thirty-five. May I have those in favour of the recommendations to grant? Please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against?
That's one.
One. Thank you. Abstentions, none. Let's, thank you, members, that is agreed. Moving on to six-three, A2, WA 2014-2156. The application is the outline application for the erection of three dwellings and associated works with some matters reserved at the former Charles Hill Nursery, Charles Hill, Tilford, GU10-2AU. Paul, I believe you're going to introduce this application, please.
Yes, thank you, thank you, chairman. The site is located in a rural location on the northern side of Charles Hill, a short distance to the north-west of the village of Alstead. The site extends to some eleven hectares, and comprises a former commercial nursery business. This has not been active for a number of years, although the site has been used for a variety of other commercial uses in more recent years. This is the site here, with Charles Hill here, and there are rights of way to the east and also across to the north. Aerial photograph of the site which is located in this location here. Not particularly clear, but the existing site layout does comprise a series of groups of sort of structures and buildings in this location here, and also in this location here. The main access to the site is located here. There is a water feature here, and there's also a reservoir, a large reservoir in the northern part of the site here. The application seeks outline permission for the erection of three detached dwellings, houses and garages, with all matters reserved apart from access, for demolition of all existing structures on the site. The applicant has provided indicative locations of each of the proposed residential units. These will be located on the site of existing office, plant, display areas, the growing tunnels and associated hard standing, and the former landscape contractor's yard and associated brick-built stores and offices. So, house will be located here, here, and here. Each dwelling will have gardens averaging naught point five five to naught point six five hectares. The indicative floor areas of the proposed development are set out in the report. It is intended that the proposed dwellings will be of traditional design and appearance to reflect the local area. The existing vehicle access to the site would be modified and improved, as was the case in the previous appeal scheme. This plan seems twice to indicate the extent of the previously developed land, which is highlighted in the dark colour here, and in this location here, which includes reservoirs, structures, buildings and the various hard standing areas. Useful comparison really of the, what's existing on-site in terms of floor area, buildings and structures, the total including the other infrastructure, which covers almost twenty per cent of the site, and also the volume of existing buildings and structures. And also, this is a comparison of the extent of appeal scheme and the current proposal. Generally speaking, the current proposal is for fewer dwellings, less floor area, but larger houses on larger plots. Just a general, few photographs of the site and some of the buildings and structures. Office building, main access drive into the site, import cabins, against structures and various buildings on the site, that the inspector, that's the reservoir, that the inspector considered to comprise previously developed land. This is a, this was the footprint of a building that was permitted in the late nineteen nineties, which is extant, and the inspector gave consideration and weight to. The application is submitted in outline, and an application in outline is used to establish whether in principle the development would be acceptable. An important material consideration in this case is the planning history relating to the site. The previous application for the erection of five houses with garages was allowed on appeal in May 2015. Officers have attached a copy of that appeal decision as an appendix to the report at page 101 of the agenda for information. Officers have referred to the main conclusions of the inspector in the assessment of the current proposal throughout the report. The key issues as identified by the inspector are set out on page sixty-five of the agenda, together with some of the main changes made to the scheme. It's worth noting that the current application was received prior to the appeal decision, and was submitted in order to address the council's reasons for refusal of the 2013 application. The current proposal would involve the erection of three larger houses on larger plots when compared to the appeal scheme, and would provide an alternative form of development on the site. So, the key determining issues, that the current application is a revised and alternative proposal for the site, the principle of the redevelopment of the site for residential development has been established by the appeal decision. This is highly material in the assessment of the current proposal, which is for a reduced number of dwellings and overall amount of development for the site. It has been established at appeal that the proposal would reuse previously developed land, and that the residential development proposed for a greater amount of development would not harm the green belt or landscape character or appearance of the area. For the reasons set out in the report, and having regard to the appeal decision, the current proposal is considered to be acceptable and can be supported. Very briefly, refer, members, to the update sheet, and you see there are updates in respect of the leave agreements and the amounts, and the officer's revised recommendation is set out, the main change being that if members are minded to support the application, is to allow three months for the completion of those agreements. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Paul. This item is subject to public speaking, but nobody's registered to speak, so, members, it's all yours. councillor King.
Thank you, chairman, and welcome back. May I order, please, ask Mr Hardwick, I notice that there's an area of common land on the south of the site, could you identify it on the plan for me, please? And do we know who maintains that site?
I have to say, I'm not aware that there's an area of common land on the site. I'm sorry, I don't know which part of the site that relates to, sorry.
I think our hands are tied here, due to the fact that the inspector passed the previous application on appeal. I'm against this site, because it is in the green belt, and it does set a precedent here, we're in trouble here as a council because of the lack of a local plan. And it is important that we get this local plan through, because people are just taking advantage of the situation, and it's unacceptable. I am fed up of putting through applications which shouldn't be put through because we don't have a local plan. I'm against this, because it's in the green belt, I know the site quite well, I used to do business with it, Chuck, and they're lovely houses, and it's a good spot, but it is green belt. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Inchbald.
Thank you, chairman. As far as the green belt is concerned, the phrase preserve and enhance the beauty of the green belt springs to mind, and almost anything would be an enhancement of the green belt compared with what is there. green belt compared with what is there. I agree with councillor Edwards, our hands are largely tied. It has... the inspector has said that it is previously developed land, and as previously developed land, whether it's in the green belt or not is scarcely relevant. Personally, I think this can only be an improvement, and we should go with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Edwards.
Can I come back? On the infrastructure contributions, what is the situation with regard to this, please? Can you explain it for us? I know we're awaiting responses from the relevant parties, but where are we on this?
Paul?
As explained in the agenda, there was a change in the way that we seek contributions on infrastructure. This application, when it came in originally, would have been subject to the council's SPD on infrastructure and standard contributions. But since April, there has been a change, and we've had to re-notify the infrastructure providers direct to see whether they can actually justify the contributions, and we're still awaiting the outcome of those responses. Clearly, upon receipt of those responses, if any, we'll put them to the applicant, and clearly we'll negotiate the amount that may be required. So, although there's a figure, indicative figure on the calculator, it's highly likely that amount will be reduced unless the providers can justify those totals. So, it's still awaited, but hopefully we'll receive those responses in the near future.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we've got to remember that even when you are in the green belt, AONB or AGLV, one's got to look at the circumstances, and sometimes the circumstances justify taking a course of action you wouldn't otherwise take. And I think the inspector in the previous application summed it up very well in his paragraph thirty-nine. Taking all those matters into account, I consider that the proposal would not have a greater impact on the openness of the green belt than the previously developed land here. And as councillor Inchball said, I mean, basically, what was there was a business which had a number of buildings and other structures. It was not open countryside. It is now in a state of ruin, and I agree that something which will be less ruinous will do no harm and, in fact, do quite a bit of good in terms of the overall appearance and attractiveness of the area. So, I'm very happy to accept that our hands are tied on this occasion, and we should agree with the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I was aware that the five houses were allowed on appeal. I think this application, which was obviously suggested by the officers on the basis of the previously developed land, which was much clearer in this application than in the previous one, was a very sound application. Obviously, I'm disappointed that we may get less infrastructure money if it's... this is the one that goes ahead. I mean, one of the things that we're desperately short of in the whole of this area is infrastructure improvements. So, I hope that if the developer decides he wants to go ahead, he bears that in mind. But I think this is a good development. I think it'll add, in fact, to the enhancement of the area as a whole, and I'm very happy to support it.
thank you, councillor Adams. Thank you, members. If there are no further questions, we'll move to the recommendations. And recommendation A, that's subject to the completion of an appropriate legal agreement within three months of the date of this meeting in respect of an off-site affordable housing contribution and ecological enhancement and estate management plan, and the views of the infrastructure providers, permission be granted, subject to the conditions one to twenty-three, informative one to nine is set out on pages ninety to ninety-nine of the agenda. Can I have a show of hands? Those in agreement, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you. Those against?
One.
One, no abstentions, thank you. Recommendation B, if the legal agreements are not signed within three months or any extended time period agreed by the local planning authority, permission be refused. Can I have a show of hands to agree with recommendation B?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed. Thank you, members. Therefore, that's agreed. Let's move on now to the non-public speaking items. Item B one. B one is WA two thousand and fifteen zero seven two three, a change of use to dental practice, class D one, from retail, class A one, at five Royal Parade, Tilford Road, Hinded, GU two six six TD. Claire, would like to introduce this... Louise, sorry. I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Got that all wrong.
This site is located on the western side of Tilford Road and is located within a parade of shops which are located here. The front of the ground floor is currently vacant but was previously occupied by dry cleaners. The rear of the ground floor and the first floor are currently occupied by dentists. The site is located adjacent to a fish and chip shop takeaway and a petrol station and post office. The remainder of the parade contains a computer shop, a conservatives' office and a coffee shop. Some residential flats are located at first floor level above some of the units. This proposal is for the change of use for the front of the ground floor from a retail shop to a dentist's. The area will form a reception and waiting area for the existing dentist at the rear of the ground floor and at first floor level. The first floor will remain as existing with no alterations proposed. The matters of principle and technical judgment are the principle of the development, and the matters of judgment are the loss of the shop, the impact on visual immunity and the impact on residential immunity. I can also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines that Hazelmead Town Council have raised no objections to the proposal, and no further objections have been received since the agenda report was published. The officer recommendation is for approval.
Thank you very much, Louise. Just make one little observation, the business that was at number five, the laundry and dry cleaners, has moved next door to the post office and general store, so facilities remain. Members, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to point out that I am a member of the Conservative Party and that our office is about three doors away from this property, and are we affected by that?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to... therefore, I would like to support this application. Thank you.
councillor King.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I'm delighted to see this application. I think it's the expansion of a very much needed facility in the Hinded and Beacon Hill area, and I wish this practice every success. Thank you.
councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. You've put my mind at rest because, yes, I do use this dry cleaners on a very regular basis. I suppose the only issue is how long councillor Edwards would be at the dentist rather than the dry cleaners and consequently further, and create problems with the parking. But otherwise, it seems an excellent idea.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Inchball.
Thank you, Chairman. Having spent five very unpleasant weeks in hospital as a result of a dental abscess, I can do nothing but support anything that contributes to the oral hygiene of Waverley. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Let's move to the recommendation, that is, subject to condition one, and informative one is set out on pages one, three, six of the agenda, permission be granted. May I have those in favour? Please show.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed, members. That's agreed. No further items to consider. That concludes the meeting. Thank you all very much.